All right, good afternoon. Thank you for coming out this evening. We're delighted to have you all with us at the Monday, January 13th, 2020, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. Before we get started, I want to know if there are any volunteers in the audience who might want to lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Anybody want to lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance? Maybe everybody in the front row there? What do you guys think? Do you want to stand up and lead us? Come on. Why don't you guys lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right? So here's the flag up here. You guys ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Nice job. Thank you, guys. Good work. Madam Clerk, will you call and roll, please?
I will. Ms. Conley? Here. Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
All right. Thanks again to all of you, and welcome. Our first order of business is adoption of a meeting agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. And our second order on the agenda is a proclamation regarding Martin Luther King holiday, and particularly as relates to Day of Service. And Ms. Hardy is going to do the honors. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the city of Falls Church is a welcoming and respectful place for people of all faiths, all races, all cultures, all sexual orientations, and all backgrounds, and whereas the city council wishes to reaffirm the longstanding community values of equality, inclusion, and diversion, and whereas in numerous proclamations in support of fair housing, disability rights, immigrant rights, and the rights of the LGBTQ community, the city council has always taken a strong stand in opposition to discrimination against any of the residents of the city of Falls Church, and whereas the city council encourages positive action to combat intolerance, and whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?", and whereas each year on Martin Luther King Jr. holiday, Americans across the country answer that question by coming together to serve their neighbors and communities, and whereas service to others is a hallmark of American character and central to how Falls Church meets challenges, and whereas the Falls Church City Council believes that ordinary citizens, armed with compassion and the willingness to serve, can come together to change the world and pursue the nation's highest ideals.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby recognize the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday on January 20th, 2020, as City of Falls Church Day of Service, and encourage all citizens to observe this day with appropriate civic, community, and service projects in honor of Dr. King, and to affirm our city's commitment to the values of equality, inclusion, and diversity. And Ms. Hardy, was there other things you might want to mention? I know we have some folks maybe in the audience you might want to recognize.
Yes. I wanted to invite our Elementary Day, Give Day ambassadors to actually come up and speak to us on behalf of this proclamation. They are leading a big service project with the elementary school community.
All right. Well, come on down. We'll give you a hearty welcome for Mr. Hardy there. All right.
We are fifth grade Give Day investors from TJ Elementary. And I'm Griffin.
I'm Xavier.
I'm Lucy.
I'm Matthew.
I'm Duke.
Give Day stands for Get Involved, Value Everyone, and is hosted by the Elementary PTA every year to help people in need. Give Day is on Monday, January 20th, MLK Day, MLK Junior Day, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at TJ.
We are supporting four different charities on Give Day. First is Food for Others. Food for Others provides weekend power packs of food to children who might not have food over the weekends. Their parents have to choose between rent and food, which is not fair. Next is Home Stretch. We'll be sorting household items and toiletries and donating them to families trying to stay out of homelessness. And parents and other adults can give blood through I Nova's Blood Mobile. And finally, thank you to the Falls Church City for allowing us to create a community art project to hang in City Hall in partnership with Welcoming Falls Church so we can show everyone that Falls Church is a welcoming city.
On Give Day, we will assemble power packs in the TJ gym. In the cafeteria, we are going to sort the items to donate to Home Stretch families and make our community art project. There will also be a bake sale that will cover the cost of the power packs and hopefully support a charity focusing on animal welfare or natural disaster relief. Parents can donate blood at the Blood Mobile in the parking lot at TJ by Seaton Lane.
We'd like to share our Give Day song with you.
Falls Church, I've got something to say, I said, Falls Church. Want to help, here's the way, I said, Falls Church. It's a service learning day where an empty heart and girl can help out. Falls Church, we will need some supplies, I said, Falls Church. Bath and cleaning supplies and hats outside to the Blood Mobile van to donate blood to those in need. Bum, 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 bum. It's by the V for F, G, I, D, E. It's by the V for F, G, I, D, E. You'll be helping out our Falls Church community, and you can do it with all your friends.
So, to help, you can donate household and toiletry items or money to the Falls Church PTA to support this project. We need trash bags, toothbrushes, toothpaste, soap, tissues, toilet paper, and paper towels. And visitor bake sale on MLK Day from 10:00 to noon.
All right. That is awesome. That is great work, everybody. How about a big round of applause? Ms. Hardy, was there anything else you wanted to tell us about? All right. Well, you guys want to come forward, maybe get a picture? Would you all like to come on up? How about we get a picture with you all? Come on.
You guys want some hints?
All right. Good work, everybody. Awesome work. Awesome work.
Yep. Yep.
You probably only got 10 of them. It's been a teamwork.
Spider baller pictures. Folks.
Keep it coming.
Stand by. Still handing out goodies.
He's going to be the official photographer.
We got a proclamation. Anyone want to hold the proclamation? Want to hold the proclamation? There you go.
I'm going to hold it. I'll pop it enough, so let's try to get the camera.
Focus on here, right there.
Much of teasing. One, two, three.
Look at the camera.
We're good?
Thank you.
All right. Well done. Hang on the newspaper. He's trying to get... Nick, you got the photo? You got the scoop? All right. Thanks, everybody. Great job. All right. Thank you, everybody. We are looking forward to that. Thank you for your great work on behalf of our community. And for those less fortunate, we greatly appreciate it. And you guys are welcome to stick around and watch the rest of our proceeding. Looks like most of you are leaving, though, for some reason, so...
Homework. It's important.
All right. Homework. I got that. All right. The next spec would be doing homework. I'm going to check up on you guys. Nobody's watching that football game tonight.
Exactly.
All right, everyone. So our next item is the introduction of our new fire official. So, Chief?
Good evening, Council.
We're delighted to hear... Go ahead. Yeah, I'm sorry.
First, I just want to give a quick summary as to how we got here. Back in 2012, Tom Polara came to us and became the fire official for the city in the Office of Emergency Management. And I wanted to, one, did a little shout out to Tom Polara, who will be... He's retired as of January 4th, but we have a celebration for him this Friday at 2:00 in the Dogwood to celebrate nine years of service here in the city. And during his nine years, Tom created a comprehensive infrastructure for our overall safety. He investigated over 57 fires. He responded to 15 natural disasters, from earthquakes to derachios to tornadoes, you name it. It hit us with Tom here. He established the Falls Church Professional Responses to Fire Prevention and Emergency Management Readiness, and undoubtedly has saved many lives and properties in his work. He established in the Fire Marshal Duties Inspection Program that inspects over close to 300 businesses each year annually, which is a prevention of fire and other disasters. He created the First 12 Minutes Program. He is responsible for all the fire investigations in the city, plan reviews for all the buildings that have been created in the city. He is instrumental team leader with the COG on regional partnerships. He also was a member of the ICP Arson and Explosive Task Force for an international flavor there. He essentially has set us up for success in the seamless transition for our new fire official, who will be Henry Lane. Henry comes to us from Arlington County. He's been with the city for five years. He's inspected nearly these 300 businesses for these five years, so he knows the city and its rich background. He began his career in Arlington County in 1982. He spent 28 years as a medic and has been on the Health and Safety Committees. He has associates in fire inspection. He has a bachelor's in fire administration. He has a master's in safety management. So we welcome Henry. And just for the kids' sake, the fire marshal in the city is one that is responsible for life safety of property and lives through the enforcement of the Virginia State Fire Prevention Code. And so that's what Mr. Henry will be doing for you. Secondly, we'd like to announce the fact that in addition to Tom's responsibilities was the Office of Emergency Management. And the Office of Emergency Management provides leadership coordination and operational planning that enables the city to respond to all of these natural disasters and/or man-made disasters that we see every day on the news. And our vision is to have everyone in the community responsible and prepared. And in doing so, we have appointed Joe Carter, who is the Office of Emergency Management Coordinator. It's probably the most important time these days with our history and what's going on in the world around us, to fortify the landscape of the city, the assets, and our best practices, to ensure we're ready for both man-made and natural disasters. Joe's a natural leader. He's been with the city and the police department for 19 years. Joe was born and raised in Falls Church. Joe was appointed December 23rd to this position and will serve under the direction of the city manager. We're fortunate to have both Henry and Joe in these positions. Their dedication and their tenure will prove us to be ready, responsive, and protected. So, Henry, do you have anything to say?
Not really, but...
I look forward to working with everybody, and thank you, and especially the kids that
have come after your school or whatever and do the inspection. And so if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. So, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for your service. We greatly appreciate all you've done and will do for our community, and want to welcome you with open arms to your new position. You certainly seem qualified, so I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments, but we all welcome you to your new role in the city.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Let's keep on going. Do we have any oaths of office to administer, Madam Clerk? All right. Let's move on then to receipt of public comment.
Thank you very much. My name is Joe Rallo, and...
Excuse me, just for one quick second. Typically, we have written comments. Did you say there were no written comments?
There are, actually. There are quite a few.
Could we get you to pause just for a quick second?
I was slow on the uptake on that one.
Not at all. It's Phil Duncan's fault.
All right. Just give us one minute, and we'll move on and grab you guys in just a second.
So are we ready?
We're ready for your...
Okay. And we had a number of comments because we haven't had a meeting since December 9th at a regular meeting. So we got one comment for staying within the original budget for the library project, and that was from Curtis Schaefer of 1280 South Washington Street. We had Amory Stapleton, Leslie Kennedy, Swati Ghosh, Chris C. Henderson, Diane Carroll, and Lauren Dewhurst wrote, asking for fully funding the library project. Asking that Insights Broad and Washington Project not be allowed to negatively impact Clarence Don's and Thompson Italian Restaurant. Paul Thomas, Joan Trager, John McNamara, and Julia S. Donnelly. Jesse Hagenbart of Marshall Street wrote, requesting that surplus funds are used for traffic calming and pedestrian safety. And Mr. Todd Friedlander of 801 Hillwood Avenue provided comments on the sanitary sewer backflow program. John Tepperman provided some information on green initiative ideas. And Dave Rifkin provided comments on the name of the high school and on changes to the school calendar. And directly after our December 9th meeting where you worked on the e-scooters issue, we had one comment from Nicholas Draper against allowing e-scooters on sidewalks, and then for... We have some comments for allowing e-scooters on sidewalks from Jenny Carroll, Douglas Deveraux, Adina Williams, Hilton Mayer, Patrick Mellon, Chris Pantaro, Philip Langford, and Dave Mead. And then from our boards and commissions, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board asked that surplus funds are used for funding Big Chaminese Park, increased costs, and reckon parks department unfunded needs. And the Architectural Advisory Board provided comments on the West End Gateway Project.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move on to public comment. But let me just say a few brief words before we get started. So everyone in the audience, you have a chance to speak if you'd like. What we ask you to do is fill out a speaker slip there in the back room and hand them to the clerk, and she'll call, or I'll call your name. Each of you have three minutes to speak. We ask that you state your name and address for the record, and that you keep your comments to three minutes. We do have a new little set of buttons and lights that tell you how much time is left. So when the light is green, you're good to go. When it turns yellow, you have one minute left. When it turns red, your time is up, and you get, what, a small electric shock? Is that what I heard, or no? That has not been installed yet, but that'll tell you that your time is up when the red light comes on. So if you could, please honor the time so that we can all get a chance to speak. So our first speakers will go ahead with Mr. and Mrs. Rallo. You're welcome to speak now, and followed by Mr. O'Hara, Charlie O'Hara. And by the way, you can speak either now, or you can speak when the item that you're here for is called. It's up to you. Welcome.
Thank you. You know our names. We've been residents of Falls Church City now for 31 years almost, and we live at 113 South Oak. We're celebrating, if you will, or acknowledging an anniversary of sorts tonight. 20 years ago, we were here as part of a traffic safety subcommittee that looked at South Lee Street and Oak Street in terms of parking and speeding. In the course of that time, we've had three hit-and-run accidents in front of our house with three total losses. The last occurred January 4th at noon, and the driver, of course, continued on, and we lost, apparently, in terms of the vehicle, almost $3,000 in damages. It's now a total loss. Parking on both sides of the streets create what I would call a defensive driving course, if people are interested in learning how to drive defensively, in and out, and in and out. We've tried to request speed humps over the last many, many years. They're on Marshall Street for some reason, but at the crest of the hill, if most people notice, at the top of the hill in South Oak, it's a clear shot all the way to Oak Street. And I don't even want to get into the problems with traffic at Oak and Broad. Those are separate issues. But people feel certainly no concern about driving through the top of the hill, down, and vice versa. There were 22 children that lived on our street when we first moved in, many of whom have their parents here. Now, I would suggest there are probably as many. They also use South Oak as a way to leave TJ and move up to the apartments, or certainly cross the street. I'm not here expecting any changes, to tell you the truth, but really, this is an advisement that we see something that's really terrible going to happen. Thank you for the yellow light. I also realize that there were PSAs that have been out in the news press with bumper stickers, and I can tell you, we could have just about any bumper sticker on our car, and none of that would have prevented what happens.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think you probably know this is a priority to our city council right now. We'll be working, spending some more time on this coming up shortly. So thank you very much. Our next speaker is Charlie O'Hara.
I'll wait for the agenda item.
All right. Jess Sabo? Followed by Ed Rose.
Thank you. I'm Jess Sabo. I live at 301 Riley Street, and I'm here to speak in favor of the library renovation and expansion. And a couple people showed up tonight without signing to speak, so I wanted to give them a chance to stand and show. If you're here to support the library renovation and expansion, will you please stand briefly so that we can see you're here? We didn't ask everyone to speak so that you could move on and actually consider our project, but thank you all so very much for coming to support us tonight. I liked how Councilmember Hardy put it in her weekly update this week, that this isn't... This issue isn't about how much anyone loves the library, or whether or not they love the library. So I wanted to speak to the urgency of some of the problems that I see being addressed by this renovation, which I'm very excited for. First of all, obviously, the ADA compliance. ADA was passed in 1990... Oh, I should have said, I'm speaking as a private citizen tonight, but I'm also a volunteer for the Library Foundation, and I worked at the library, the circulation desk, for two and a half years. I no longer work there at this time. But some of my favorite patrons would arrive, having wheeled themselves in their wheelchairs across the city to come to the library regularly. And the fact that they can't fully navigate the library once they're inside is no longer acceptable, as I'm sure many of us agree. I know you've heard a lot about how storytime is overcrowded, but I wanted to speak personally. When I moved to the city, I had been attending storytime at my local library in Alexandria for five years with my daughter, almost weekly, and I used to invite friends. It was extremely pleasant. I've been to storytimes at six different DC metro libraries, and ours is the only one that is really uncomfortable, being crammed into that space, trying to make yourself small while holding a little one in your lap, not letting your toddler go away from arm's reach for fear that they'll disappear into the stacks. It's really uncomfortable, and I could not continue to go. I tried it a few times and had to stop going to storytime at Mary Riley Stiles. We are not serving our older elementary school students because there's no specific place for them to be in the library. They have their books to check out, but there's no seating there. And the same thing for our teen section being right next to the circulation desk. I've tried sitting there to read quietly myself a few times. It's just not pleasant, since you have to listen to everything happening at the circulation desk. All of these problems are being addressed in the renovation, and so we're just here tonight to let you know that we still support the project. We'd love you to fully fund it. We've been excited for it to move forward ever since we thought ground might break last spring. So we're hoping to see the library move to its temporary location in February. And I actually think it's the financially conservative thing to do, rather than waiting and see this project cost our city so much more. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Our next speaker is Mr. Rose.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you very much for the time. I know everything you have heard many times before, so I will try to be brief. You have heard time and time again, and you're aware yourself of how much the library is used and how much people love it. Well, in some ways, perhaps we have loved it too much. We have worn it out. It is old. The elevator, the bathrooms, and various other things definitely have to be renovated. The spaces are inadequate. I will not reiterate all the things that are wrong. You have heard that time and time again. But we do need a new library. I was on the library board for 20 years and on the foundation since it was created, currently and president of the foundation. In the past couple years, I have toured many of the libraries in this region, particularly those of cities that are roughly the size of Falls Church, such as Front Royal, Warrington, Culpeper, all of which have new, or at least recently renovated, libraries. I have seen the things and how they have handled what we want to do in Falls Church. Particularly, if you want to take a short drive, I ask you to go visit Front Royal. A new library that has a large children's section, which we need. It has glassed-in study carols of different sizes, for two students up to six or eight students. We also need that. So there are various things we need with the library. You're well aware of it. I will encourage you to do that. We sometimes think that the age of libraries is somewhat past. That could not be more untrue. They are used more than ever, both in different facilities, different kinds of materials, and certainly by greater population. And in this day and age, if you stop and think about it, sure, we can buy books at Amazon. First of all, you have to pay for them. Second of all, you can't pull them off the shelf and peruse a few pages or chapters and put them back. There's no place around here, even in some of the bookstores, where you can lay out books on a table to study or do research. In a library, you can lay out four or five books, or even eight or 10 books. The need of the library is great. It will be used. We're asking you, on behalf of the patrons, to build it. They'll use it. They'll appreciate it. They'll love you for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Our last speaker at this time is Rachel Bailey. Welcome.
So my name is Rachel Bailey. I live at 509 Ann Street here in the city. This is a bit of an experiment for me. I've never spoken before the council before, and I'm going to follow in the footsteps of the two people who spoke before me, simply to say very clearly that I would request that you fully fund the library expansion project. And I'm going to make the financial point. I know the issue, or at least I believe the issue, is that you will have to be approving a greater amount of money than has already been approved. I want to affirm that it is my strong belief that that is a wise investment for the council to make in this institution of the library in the city of Falls Church. That's the thing. It's a wise investment. Please make it.
Thank you. All right. That's the last speaker I have at this time. You are still welcome to speak when the item of interest to you is called. Unless there's any other speakers right now, I'm going to move on to the report of the city manager, or actually, council request. Are there any council requests before I move on to the report of the city manager? All right, let's go on. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, members of council. Just a few things to report on, and I'll just go through them in order. First, the Storm Order Task Force met for the first time back in December, and their next meeting will be on January 23rd, which is next Thursday, and they'll be discussing the evaluation criteria for storm order projects. I also just want to note that Alan Dalton, who is our senior engineer, is retiring from the city in February. Mike Domenica will continue the work of the task force that he began, and we've also... We're also working very hard to staff up in our storm order and sanitary funds, and we'll have some personnel announcements in that area, we think, fairly soon. On the city council schedule, I'll just note that we have a special meeting to plan the city council's two-year work plan. That is scheduled for Saturday, January 25th, from 9:00 until 2:00 p.m. And we'll get... That will be a publicly noticed meeting, and we're working to finalize the details of that retreat to make it as effective for the council as possible. Leaf pickup. I just want to note that it is largely complete, and I want to thank all the DPW crews who worked so hard to get our leaves up. And I also just want to note Cindy is putting a picture up on the wall, but for the first time, the city is no longer storing all the leaves up at the high school. We're instead storing them in the back, in the rear of the property yard, and there's a picture there of the leaves piled up with Robert Goff in front of that big mountain of leaves. And then behind that is the new structure that will be, when we grind the leaves to make the black gold mulch that will be available to the public come spring, we're going to use that shelter to try to limit the amount of blowing around of leaves so that it won't impact the neighbors, businesses, and residences. So just wanted to report on that. That shed is complete and operational. The Fellow's property. The city is in the process of finalizing a contract for the demolition of the home on the Fellow's property. As the council and community will recall, this two-acre parcel was recently purchased by the city. The purpose of the acquisition was to preserve the property as open space and possibly in the distant future for use by the schools if needed. It is a site with wonderful... So, just wanted to report on that. That shed is complete and operational. The Fellow's property. The city is in the process of finalizing a contract for the demolition of the home on the Fellow's property. As the council and community will recall, this two-acre parcel was recently purchased by the city. The purpose of the acquisition was to preserve the property as open space and possibly in the distant future for use by the schools if needed. It is a site with wonderful old trees, tulip, oak, magnolia, cherry, and that really was the mission statement of that acquisition, is to preserve that open space. Mr. Schlitt has reached out to neighbors and to representatives of historic Falls Church and to Vipas to let them know of the impending demolition of the home. The home is not protected by the Historic Preservation Ordinance, as it misses the cutoff age by a few years and was built after 1913. But as we went through the comp plan process for this parcel prior to acquiring it, the mission really was and the purpose was for open space preservation and future school use. And so, the demolition of the home is part of that plan, but we just wanted to make sure that it wasn't a surprise when that work is done. So, we expect that to occur in the month of January or early February, depending on the finalization of that contract. And then lastly, I would just note, we had a comment tonight about traffic calming. It is an area where we're doing a lot of planning right now through the winter months so that when the weather warms up, we can proceed with traffic calming projects. I also want the council to be aware that I have asked Cindy Mester to coordinate with staff. As you know, Jeff Sykes is our neighborhood traffic calming program coordinator. He has to work very closely with DPW, the police, O-Com, and Cindy is helping with that coordinating effort, because we do have some pretty big policy issues that we're working through, the use of the grant funds, potential requests in the CIP budget next year for funding for traffic calming and funding in general. And so, Cindy, thank you for helping to coordinate that work. That's all I have to report tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I've got a question or two. So, Ms. Hardy and Mr. Duncan, why don't you guys figure out who's going next?
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Shields, your two updates that you gave prompted me to ask follow-up questions. Also, on Saturday, the 25th, I think we just got notification of a Mason Hard Hat Tour in the middle of our retreat. Are we going to take an intermission and head on over?
So, that's a good question, and I have sent a note back to the school administration just to let them know that that is the date of the council's retreat, and I got a note back. Let me just see what it says really quickly. So, we'll coordinate that as we plan the retreat. If it's the council's desire to take a break from the retreat, to go get some fresh air and take a hard hat tour, we could build that in. But why don't we have a follow-up discussion about that?
And then on Fellow's. I think in a previous email update, you had let us know that we had gotten a citizen request, or maybe it was from Harb, to consider moving the house to one of the back properties. Have we closed that idea out?
What I was relaying was a conversation that was had, but not a formal proposal. And so, we have not received such a formal proposal.
Okay. And is the demolition cost already accounted for in all the various budget amendments and discussions?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
I have the same calendar question. So, the other thing I wanted to raise was, there was a report in the schools' online news today about the red light, the stop sign, bus stop sign program, which in the first six months of this fiscal year, I think nabbed 1,082 people passing stopped school buses. Thanks to the cameras, we captured their pictures, and I'm just, hey, I'm appalled at the number of, it's a great program, obviously, but I'm appalled at the number of people that that represents. I mean, given the schools didn't start till September, you know, most of those 1,000 were probably in the first couple of months. At any rate, my question is, there's a certain amount of money that we're collecting. Some of it goes to the vendor, but some of it comes back to the school system, I think. I'm wondering, and I know we have to spend some of the police department resources to look at the pictures, too, to make sure that they pass muster before we send the tickets. Are we in the budget? How do we account for that money, and is there any way that we can deploy some of those resources to putting police on the streets? I know that they're not going to chase after people who run stops, who run the bus sign. That's why we put the cameras on. But just a more physical presence of police officers on the street, particularly in September and October when school starts up? Is that something that we try to do, a surge effort around the beginning of the school year, to try to cut down those numbers?
Well, let me, if I could get back with the council on the, sort of, the fiscal numbers and how the arrangement was set up when the program was set up, and I'll need to get back with the council on that. I will say, just as a policy, our hope is that that number goes down. That is, the purpose of the program is to change behavior, and that has, that was the experience with the photo red program, and so, hopefully, that would be the result of the camera stop arm program as well. But let me get back with you.
Yeah, the news story said that it's rare for people to be repeat offenders. Once they get the $250 ticket, they tend not to get another one. But just the number is so high, I'm just wondering, is there some place or somewhere on Broad Street that people aren't aware that they're supposed to stop? I mean, it's just, that would average out to like 10 or 12 people passing a bus with a deployed arm every single day of the school year, morning and afternoon. And that just seems, I know we have a lot of traffic issues, but that just seems like an unbelievable amount of scofflawism. At any rate, thank you for looking into this, in keeping with what Mr. Rallo and others have said. You know, we need to get control of our neighborhood streets, and that's one way to start.
All right. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
While we're on the topic of neighborhood traffic calming, I was on an epic text thread today, Phil, on that particular issue about average number of tickets written due to folks blowing past the stop signs. And there were a number of comments that, especially on Broad Street, when there are school buses stops, folks that are in a rush can't see that there is necessarily a school bus stop behind a line of traffic, and will pull out of that to go around, and by the time they pass it, it's too late. So, I think that that may be one area. However, in terms of mitigating some of the speeding and the other traffic issues we've had in the city, I certainly hope that the policy has its intended effect. In regards to that, Mr. Shields, just one quick comment, and I thank them personally, but I do want to thank you and the sheriff's department for their visible presence on some of the side streets, to cut through streets from Lee Highway. I know there have been a number of vehicles that have been stopped, and I know that they will be deploying a speed trailer on a few of the streets as they rotate. So, my thanks to the city for moving quickly to get the short-term impact of stopping folks from speeding and blowing through stop signs during school hour. So, a number of the neighbors and the residents there have reached out to me and thanked the sheriff's department and the city staff for deploying those resources here in the near term. So, thank you for that.
All right. Any other comments? If not, let's keep on moving. Next up, I guess, is the business on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Our first item is TR 20-04, Resolution Appointing City Council Members to City Council Committees as Liaisons to City Boards and Commissions, and to Serve on Regional Organizations Including Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments COG Policy Boards and Committees as of January 13, 2020.
All right. Is there any, I don't know if there's really any need for any staff comment on this? Any council comment? Any member of the public wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter has closed the public. Do we have a motion?
Could I ask a question before? Just on the Foster's Cable Access Corporation Board, there's a note that says ends 103120. So, our plan for that is, is why? Does that sunset?
That is, the last council appointee's term is up on that board. If you'll recall, we made some changes, and we don't appoint a member. This council doesn't appoint a member to that board anymore, and so, the person is going to serve out their term, and so, once that's done, we won't have a liaison anymore. That was decided in the agreement, I believe. We had to do a little research on that.
Or FCCAC appointee expires on that date. Is it necessarily connected that there would not be any informal liaison? I mean, I'm just comparing the Cable Access Board to like Chamber of Commerce, you know? I mean, we don't actually appoint anyone to the Chamber of Commerce either, but we still have a liaison. I'm just wondering if, is that something written down in the rules, or is that just something that we discussed?
I don't believe it was a rule, but I think it was discussed at that time, and that was decided. I did go back and research when we made the change.
Okay. All right. So, just to be clear, at the end of October, then, of this year, that drops off?
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Mr. O'Hara moved it up, TR 20-04.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Carrie, seven to zero.
All right. Thank you. Next up.
I did want to note the burgeoning strength of the Economic Development Committee, which now has achieved the status of being the only one of our groups, which has three of us on it. So, that's a bright sign in the future of economic development for our city, and we welcome Mr. Lichtenhouse to the party.
All right. Well, nice job. You guys have done a good job so far, so. All right, let's move on to the next item. Madam Clerk?
Yes. We have a first reading for TO 20-01, Ordinance to amend Ordinance 1995 and Ordinance 1996 regarding the Budget of Expenditures and Revenues Appropriating Funds for Fiscal Year 2020 for the General Fund, Sanitary Sewer Fund, Stormwater Fund, and the Capital Improvements Program Funds.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Bowe, are you going to take the lead on this?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Tarter, members of the council. We have for you our first budget amendment for fiscal year 2020. These include all the items that were discussed at last Monday's work session. I will highlight a few of them. For the General Fund, we are requesting an appropriation of $680,911 for grants, donations, and reimbursements that we have received, as well as appropriation of some carryover funds. I'll bring your attention to item number seven on page three, which is requesting an appropriation of $175,852 to build a leaf mulch shelter at the property yard. Staff recommends using insurance reimbursement funds that we received this year for the wind damage that was done last year, for which we ended up using underspending in the department's budget. So, it would be within the departmental use of the fund, so we're requesting appropriation of those funds. In addition, an appropriation of $82,508 to pay off the interest that was received from the 2019 general obligation note, the 20 million note that we have issued in May of this year. That, along with the debt service, would pay a total interest of $145,708 on that note. That was, that was matured when the new bond was issued in November. In addition to that, we're requesting appropriation of $75,638 for appropriation of insurance reimbursements that we have received for repair and replacement of properties that were damaged. And a carryover of unspent funds for Downtown Plaza Project, $71,771, that we used, unspent 1% portion of the transient occupancy tax from that last fiscal year to be carried forward this year. And with that, that summarizes the General Fund. In the Sanitary Sewer Fund, we are requesting an appropriation of $100,000 from fund balance for operations, $50,000 for the backflow prevention program that was approved by council earlier on, a month ago, and $50,000 for staff time to address the varied needs that are required to address the demands that are growing and the study as well. In the Stormwater Fund, we are requesting an appropriation of $180,000 for operating funds, $50,000 to supplement the other $50,000 that was for the staff time and survey work and hotspots, and in addition, $100,000 to repair a retaining wall that was damaged during the July 8th flood. The next section covers capital improvement programs. There are some transfers between projects and new appropriations, so I'll just go down the list. For Big Chimneys Park, we are requesting underspending from two projects, Larry Graves Synthetic Turf of $80,000 from that project, and $30,000 from Howard Herman Stream Valley Park to be transferred. Those are leftover funds from those projects to be transferred for Big Chimneys Park, as well as $40,000 for, from the Park Master Implementation Program to assist in constructing pathway improvements and concrete sidewalks at the Big Chimneys. In addition, next one is transfer of transportation funds, $35,000 from VDOT, de-allocated a portion of our grant for the Northwest Lincoln Avenue Traffic Intersection Improvement, so we're requesting to transfer those funds for paving South Maple Road Bed Reconstruction Projects. So, going back to the Sanitary Fund, and I would like to also bring a PowerPoint to show you the fund balances, because this capital piece has a request for appropriation. So, we're requesting a total of $2,371,942 increase for the West End Sanitary Sewer Project, Expansion Project. $1.4 million would be the use of sewer availability fees that we have from the balance so far. And in the next slide.
While you're doing that, just for the public's benefit, this is really like a closed fund, right? So, this is not something we're seeking, you're not seeking funds from the General Fund for these sewer improvements. This is from the Enterprise Fund, or whatever you might want to characterize it, that's dedicated for this use.
That's correct. So, we currently have, as of June 30th, 2019, we have a balance in the availability fee. We had a balance of $4.9 million, of which $3.2 million was appropriated as part of the fiscal year 2020 five-year CIP program for the West End Expansion Project. We are requesting an additional appropriation of $1.4 million towards the same project, and also, a transfer of all unspent appropriations from the Dorchester Pipeline Bursting Project, which is in the amount of $971,942. So, this would bring the total project budget to $5,571,942. For the Stormwater Fund, so, I can, while we are on the Sanitary Fund, I can also review the Sanitary Fund operating balance, the fund balance, the first one, sorry, the first one, yeah. The Undesignated Funds, we have a balance of $6.9 million on, as of June 30th. The financial policy calls for a reserve for operations, which is 25% of the expenditures, which is $1.5 million, and 2% of the capital assets as a capital reserve per the policy, which would, or $400,000, bringing the balance, the fund balance, available fund to $5 million, and we're requesting an appropriation of $100,000 that was described as part of the operations, bringing the remaining balance to $4.9 million.
Again, just to make this clear to everyone, this is not the General Fund.
This is Sanitary Sewer Fund earmarked specifically for these sanitary sewer-related needs that the city has.
Can we go back one slide and talk about the West End Project?
Sure.
So, it sounds like we planned for $3.2, and then we're taking all the money that was left over from the Dorchester Pipe Bursting Project, and then adding an additional $1.4?
That's correct.
So, the project's going to come in at $5.5?
Five.
And we think that'll be enough?
That's the estimates that we have, and city manager, Mr. Shields, would you like to add something?
That is correct. The, one thing I would just note is that the West End Project itself is going to pay a very significant sewer availability fee that will cover the cost for the expansion of the system to provide service for that development. Those fees, just for the council's awareness, we're currently doing a study to update these fees, but currently they're $6,140 per unit, per residential unit, and then there's associated fees, you know, for hotel rooms and all the commercial fixtures and things like that. So, it ends up being a very substantial payment where growth pays for growth in the sewer utility fund.
So, we shouldn't worry about the $350,000 in balance here because we think it's going to be replenished?
It will be replenished. That is correct.
That's correct.
Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't worry. There are other challenges on the sanitary sewer. There are other challenges on the sanitary sewer side, and we'll be having more policy discussions with the council about those, including the need to purchase some additional capacity from Fairfax County for this sewer shed and, and some associated issues with that. But we'll have additional time to work that through, and we'll also be having a sewer rate study, which will encompass these availability fees that will be as a policy question for the council this, you know, over the coming months.
Do we have a policy around how much should be in this balance? Because this is quite a drastic drawdown.
That is correct. We do have policies that, that the CFO just noted for overall sewer fund. The availability fees are just one designated portion of that, so the policies really apply to the undesigned portion of the sanitary sewer fund.
And the West End sanitary project coming in so high above the three point, the 3 million is just, costs just came in higher?
That is correct.
Yeah, it's just, it's part of the very difficult bidding environment that we're in right now. And, and we, we are still, we are in the process right now of finalizing that contract for the leg that will stretch from the high school down to the intersection of Route 7 and Haycock. And we are working through some ways to reduce some of the costs that are reflected right now. The budget amendment is the full cost, and we're trying to reduce some of those costs. But they'll be in the reductions in the, in the neighborhood of hundred, you know, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. It won't be more than that.
Vice Mayor has a question.
Ms. Bowe, can you just remind us, how does money get into the sanitary sewer fund? It's fees from users?
That's correct.
Is that all? Is there a tax rate implication?
So, the revenues that we collect include service charges that we collect from households and the availability fees from the construction projects. So, that together makes up our revenue sources.
Thanks.
Mr. Snyder, and then Mr. Littenhouse.
Thanks a lot. I, I think Councilmember Hardy asked the question, and, and Vice Mayor Connolly that I had. But I think it's very important that we keep a ledger here of what we're contributing for the West End project so that the developer and we don't lose sight of what we have put into this project, which includes the $15 million transportation work from the regional sources for Haycock and Seven, and now includes 5 million for this. So, I, just going forward in our negotiations with the developer, we better be getting a very significant upside, and that included in the city's costs are these kinds of costs to enable that project to occur. City Manager, you're nodding. Is that something we can do?
Yeah.
And keep it in front of us as we negotiate with the developer and with the occupants of that site?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Littenhouse?
So, I understand the TAP fees that will be used to cover this, and I agree with Councilman Snyder's position that we need to make sure that we're net positive at the end of the day with the West End project. My concern is timing. We've just put together a stormwater task force. We've got a number of other needs that have been requested be addressed throughout the city as it relates to sanitary sewer and a number of other issues. And because the TAP fees and the fees themselves that come from the households are what fill this fund and cover these costs, is, how are we mitigating the risk of potentially having to increase our rates and potential revenue implications coming from the households to fill a fund that we may need to help address some other issues in the city before that West End project delivers?
Well, if you're speaking specifically of stormwater projects, you know, those are what the task force is working on, and we're gonna be developing a very new-looking stormwater utility. The san, on the sanitary side, that CIP is pretty well established, and we've identified the costs that we anticipate. Those are in the capital improvements program. This specific project has come in above budget, and that's, that's the concern that's in front of us right now. But in terms of sort of other issues, other than needing to purchase additional capacity, I think we've identified those. The ones where the great unknowns are is on the stormwater side.
Okay. I mean, as long as we have a plan to make sure that we don't have to drastically increase rates, and we can balance that in terms of drawing down and making sure that the timing's correct, so, okay.
Mr. Duncan?
Could I go back to the Line 200 project, the Northwest Lincoln Avenue Traffic Intersection Improvement Project? I know this is not a lot of money compared to what's been discussed, but I just, let me lay out the policy objective to the manager and, and have him tell me if it's gonna be met or if I need to advocate something further. So, my understanding had been that we would, in conjunction with the opening of the Founder's Row Project, which is about in the middle of '21, would be doing, you know, all we reasonably could to improve pedestrian facilities leading to that development, particularly on the north side of town, along Northwest Street. What I'm looking at there suggests that, well, I won't presuppose. Is that improvement project at Northwest and Lincoln still, you know, on some sort of calendar that would hit in in the middle of '21? Do I need to advocate for supplemental funding to get it onto that track? I don't want to take money away from the South Maple Road Bed Reconstruction because, as we've discussed, that's part of town that also needs help. But what's gonna happen in Northwest and Lincoln if I don't say anything further?
Well, we're working on the transportation CIP right now.
Kind of money are we talking about? I mean, if we're moving, it's obviously gonna cost more than $35,000 to do what needs to be done at Northwest and Lincoln.
I, I don't know the project budget at this point.
I don't have the specific project dollars with me, but our traffic signals with all the pedestrian and improvements are running between 1.3 and 1.5 million, current cost estimates.
So, this, this project was part of trying to sort of stack up the intersection improvements around the city. And one of the things that's driving it is Dominion Virginia Power wanting to get signals off of their infrastructure. So, we're moving to mast arms in, on those intersections. There are a good number of intersections across the city that we still need to get to, and this is just one in that list. With respect to Founder's Row, it was not ever envisioned as part of the package of transportation improvements for Founder's Row. We, we had it, put it into the CIP as a separate concern just about improving a, getting, getting off of DVP poles, but also improving the general walkability of that intersection. The big thrust that we have in our capital transportation CIP is to, A, get our cost estimates vetted and re-vetted with escalation in them so that when it comes time to implement, the money is there. And two, to make sure that the staff resources are there for these projects as well. So, with that, there will be, if we follow that, there will be some reduction in CIP projects. But the ones that are in the list, when we make promises we're gonna do them, we'll do them. That's what we want, that's where we want to get our transportation CIP towards. And there have been some projects we needed to push into the out years in order to accomplish that, and this is one of them.
Okay, well, I guess the answer to my question is, I would like us to not replicate, if possible, the experience with the 301 West Broad, you know, where things trailed after the development of that building as far as getting across Annandale and the park and all that, if at all financially possible. You know, one of the big assets to the Founder's Row development for neighbors is that they don't have to drive to it. And so, it'd be useful that they feel safe walking. And, you know, we had a good bit of public input from folks along Northwest already about conditions there for school kids and pedestrians generally. And, you know, we hope that that'll increase by some significant fold when Founder's Row opens, and that people who live in, you know, over the line in the county will be walking, not driving, to see the movies and avail themselves of all the other opportunities there. So, I just hope that we can keep that on our radar as a priority project when we're doing the triage of things that have to get pushed in the out years. Thanks.
All right, is there more to your presentation?
I'll just move over to Stormwater Fund.
All right.
Another enterprise fund, not a general fund. We are requesting an appropriation of $430,000 for capital work, $180,000 for additional stormwater detention in Big Chimney Parks, and new stormwater pipes and inlets adjacent to Big Chimneys on Shirley Street, and $250,000 to pay for the survey analysis and design of stormwater improvements at six identified project areas. So, looking at the fund balance for Stormwater Fund balance as of June 30th, 2019, was 2.1 million. And as stipulated by the financial policy, the reserve and capital, the reserve for operations, as well as capital reserve together, make up 625,000. Would leave a available balance of 1.5 million. Of that, we are requesting $180,000 for Big Chimneys and $250,000 for surveys. And, sorry for that typo, the 180 is for the operations that was discussed earlier, 100 for the retaining wall, and the 50 for the salary, and 30 for staff appropriations. And of the 430, 180,000 is for the Big Chimneys project, so leaving a balance of 926,000 after those appropriations.
All right, I'll tell you, before I move on, I think the Vice Mayor and myself have a disclosure we'd like to read. And I don't know whether you'd like to go first, or?
I make the following statement before City's Council's consideration of TO 20 dash 01, fiscal year 2020 budget amendment. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore, I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2020 budget. I can participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
And I as well make the following statement for Council's consideration of TO 20 dash 01, an amendment to the FY 2020 budget. My wife is an employee of the Falls Church City Public School Board, and therefore, I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the 2020 FY fiscal budget. I can participate in this matter fairly, objectively, in the public interest. All right, Ms. Bowe, that concludes your presentation. Are there additional questions from council? Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none in the matter is close to the public. Mr. Dun, oh, I'm sorry, come on down.
Good evening. Charlie O'Hara, 2717 Welcome Drive, Chair of the Advisory Board of Recreation and Parks. You have a memo from us, from our last meeting with regards to this budget amendment and how it affects Big Chimneys Parks. The good news is, we're not asking for the reallocation, or allocation of new funds. We are strictly asking for you to reallocate some of the funds that the Rec Department has saved on prior projects. That is, the Howard E. Herman Stream Valley Park, the Larry Graves Fields, and for the use of some of the park, master park inflammation plans. In addition, the Stormwater Management Fund is providing us with some funds to cost, to cover the increased costs. So, good news, we're moving forward. We hope to have this completed. We've already had the groundbreaking, and there is no new funds being requested. So, we request that you pass this resolution. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak to this matter? All right, the matter is closed to the public. Is there additional conversation or discussion, Ms. Hardy?
Mayor, sorry, I actually did have more questions. I thought we were just asking Ms. Bowe the questions in relation to her presentation. So, thank you for actually the breakdown on stormwater and sanitary sewer because I don't think we usually spend as much time talking about those policies and how much we should keep in reserve, so that's helpful. I think a general comment I have is that it is very eye-opening to see how much, number one, practice, projects are coming in. So, the West End Sanitary Sewer Project, the fact that it's nearly doubled should be pretty concerning. Hopefully, that is it. Stormwater Fund, we're down to 900,000, and now we're gonna start the Stormwater Task Force that's gonna look at six project areas. I imagine that work's not gonna be cheap. And so, while I absolutely support using the money to work on the Big Chimneys Park and actually do the engineering work, to actually do the analysis on those six project areas, I think we need to go in eyes wide open, looking at the remaining balance in the Stormwater Fund and what that will mean to actually get those projects done and the prioritization. So, thank you very much for the work on that. I did have a, I sent this over, over email, and I think I CC Budget and Finance, but a general request I have is, as we look at budget amendments, and this is only the first of two I think we're gonna have this month, is I'd like to actually have a consolidated list of all the different budget items coming our way. And so, while we're looking at a pretty innocuous list of things that need to get done, largely funded by grants and other transfers across funds and whatnot, I think we have a bunch of things that are actually asking for money. There are many mouths at the trough, I think, as we've said. So, over Friday, we've gotten Rec and Parks requests for additional funding on various things. We've gotten many, many requests on traffic calming, I think from the Hendersons and other folks we've heard about, improvements on South Maple sidewalks, traffic signals. Frankly, I have lost track of them. I know that West Spring, Little Falls, and Park have all been malfunctioning, so I want to make sure those actually have money to make sure they don't malfunction. Those are basic things that we should be taking care of. And so, whether we do it for this, before we do it for the second reading vote, or before we do the next budget amendment, I want to make sure that we are looking at that holistic view so we're not just approving things one-off. Because again, when you look at these things, they're all important. They are all important for us to vote on and prove and move forward. But I want to make sure we have that full view. And because we've gotten so many the past six months and this budget amendment is a little later than we normally do it, I want to make sure we have that big picture in mind before we take any votes.
So, we are keeping a list?
Great.
Of the funding that needs to be, and we will bring it to you as part of the second budget amendment, of a list of total available funding, as well as list of all the needs, the pressing needs, and then the ones that are options that go. So, we'll bring it right down to you.
Thank you, because I think we've lost track, so I'm glad you guys are keeping. Thank you.
Hold on, just to, just to clarify, second budget amendment or second reading for this?
Second budget amendment, which will request appropriation of general funds. This does not request appropriation of general fund balance. So, when we bring you that request, with that, we'll bring you the full, full available funds and the needs.
Yep, okay. Yeah, I would echo the, the concerns. I look at this, especially at this point in the game where we're kind of at zero sum, where we're gonna be taking from one area to move to another. We need to be able to prioritize, and it needs to be done holistically. So, it'd be very difficult for me to make decisions around where we're gonna put money without that entire list. Oh, thank you.
All right, Mr. DeHazi?
This is a pretty good presentation, actually. I would ask that, in the future going forward, the staff report reflects the impact if these funds are not approved? Give us a sense of what's more important, or not. And also name any other dependencies and those kind of things that depend on these things. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Move the grand first reading to TO 20 dash 01, schedule second reading and public hearing for January 27, 2020, and advertise the same according to law.
Second.
All right, we've got a second. Mr. Z, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, and I guess it's my agenda. It looks like the briefing on the library, is that right, Mr. Shields? Is that next?
So, council and members of the public, the request tonight is for the council to receive a briefing on our negotiations with Centennial Construction on the guaranteed maximum price for the library. Those constructions are, those negotiations are ongoing at the present time, and so, it would be appropriate to provide that briefing to the City Council in executive session to preserve the city's negotiating position. And, and so, later on this item is a motion to do that. The intent would be to hold that closed session in this room and, and have that briefing and get council's input on it. I would just note, in terms of what is in the packet, there are project questions and answers, which is staff's hearing questions from the community and from members of the City Council on this project. We've attempted to document those questions and provide a written response to those. We've also provided a history and a timeline for the project. And we provided the staff report that was given to the City Council that provides additional background on the project back on September 16, 2019. It is not my intention tonight to go through all the questions and answers, but before we do go into closed session, if there are any discussion or questions about that document or the timeline or anything else that's provided, I would be happy to try to respond to those. And then again, the request would be to have the discussion on the, the actual contractual numbers in closed session.
All right, are there any questions or comments, Ms. Hardy, for Mr. Shields?
Does anyone else want to go first? Okay, so, thank you very much. I've read that document like three times over. document like three times over, so I really appreciate the detail that's been provided to many of these questions. I did have some follow-up one. On number six, I appreciate the benchmarking. Do we have more recent or ongoing library projects around that we can benchmark costs with? I think especially the concern is that in the past two years, we've seen construction prices really escalate. So, I think it'd be helpful to see something from 2018, 2019 in progress, anything that's been advertised in Arlington or Fairfax.
I think this was our survey of the most recent ones. I mean, they're, you know, like the Westover Library in Arlington, that's, that's going back pretty many years now. And, so, these were the most up-to-date ones that we could put our finger on.
Was 2017 Tyson's Piment, for example? I thought it was more recent. I thought it was more 2018.
I think that is one of these that's in this list.
Okay. Well, if we have more recent, I think that would be helpful, because I think, again, you're seeing costs go across the board, so I think it'd be nice to see that number. I think I know the answer to this, but I think it is helpful for the public. Further down, I think in number seven, to clarify, if we were to stick with the original $8.7 million budget, that would just buy us renovation, correct? Like, that is off the table at this point, given the current scope?
We don't have a price for renovation, so I can't leap to that conclusion. We would need to sort of go down that path. I think one might presume that one could, but we don't actually have cost estimates for a renovation project.
Okay. So, in all the price negotiations that happened, do we have a, I guess, quantity of how much is de-scoping and/or value engineering has happened, or is that something we need to do enclosed?
The, let me turn to the project manager on that, because a lot of the de-scoping, or, you know, a lot of the value negotiations have been in discussion with the library board and with, with city council, and are just part of any kind of a normal process. The ones that we're thinking about right now would be appropriate for closed session.
Okay.
At least in terms of how it bears on our negotiations with the contract.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we have any list of, in our, that we're able to discuss in public session about examples of, of value engineering. I know we've discussed, like, with the, the brick selection, which was a lower-cost option. It's one that the library board liked very much, so it wasn't viewed as a compromise, but it did, that was an example of some cost savings. And-
Yes. And another, by the way, my name is Lionel Millard, and I am the project manager for the library renovation addition. So, without going into too much detail, some of the items that were looked at was, for instance, the elevator. Should we refurbish it and leave the one in place and build a new one, or do we add the elevator that's on the addition? Another thing we looked at was the HVAC, which we were not able to touch certain aspects of that without eliminating lead. And other items, some of the finishes, such as the carpet tile, I believe we looked, we went for lower, I don't want to say quality, but they were definitely, definitely higher-end products that we could have selected, but the architect recommended that we do some modifications to the finishes. I also know that we went with paint, as opposed to wood paneling in some of the public areas of the library, which also saved us a significant amount of money. Those are just some of the items that I can remember off the top of my head.
Are there any items on that value engineered list where we feel like it would compromise the lifespan of the project?
Um, no. The ones that we felt would do that were eliminated by the architect and the engineer, because they said that we would end up paying for it through additions in scope during construction, and also in maintenance costs in the, in the future.
Okay. That was a softball. So, what is the lifespan of the renovated, expanded library?
Ooh.
Mr. Shields, you can take it, too. I mean-
Fifty years.
I'm gonna, I'm not going to be around, but I want to hold you to that, if that's the case.
Well, to, the last time we did a major renovation expansion of the library was 30 years ago, as, as an example.
So, we feel like this is going to last us 30 years, in the current scope?
Um, I believe so. The library is experiencing some failures in their mechanical systems, and their plumbing systems, and the elevator. So, those items usually have about a 30- to 40-year lifespan before you start having issues with them.
And what about in terms of square footage and capacity? Because I think I read in either this Q and A or some older documents, that there was some study that we had done that said, kind of the ideal square footage was around 41,000. And I think if I read my numbers right, this will bring our library to 25,000.
Um, so, when with, speaking with Mark with BKV, we were in line with the additional square footage and the CFC's current population, because that was one of the questions that I had from when I initially came on as project manager. And given the, the layout of the building and the available square footage, and not being able to add the addition onto the existing library, that it would be suitable for the additional, I think it's 7,000 for where we are with our population.
Where I'm going with it is that, I mean, similar to how we wrestled with this with the high school and all the other school projects we've done, we want to make sure we right-size it, right? We don't want to build too big, because we want to make sure it's a good value, but we don't want to build too small, such that I'm creating a problem for our future council in five years, that they have to go back and say, gosh, we didn't do it right. We didn't build it big enough. We didn't do enough. And so, I think what I'm getting at between the lifespan questions, when do we have to do it, capacity, is, do we feel really good that this is going to last us 30 years, such that we would feel good with a 30% budget overage?
Um, I feel fine with it, and I believe BKV does as well. And I guess that would also be a question that maybe Jenny would want to weigh in on as well, but I've heard no negative feedback as far as the square footage availability that we will be getting.
Mr. Shields, do you have any other things to add?
No.
And then, my last question was around, I think we've talked about this before, not knowing as much about how construction projects are set up, but the owner's rep model, similar to how the new high school project is happening. Could you give me a, maybe layman's explanation of that model versus what we're doing, and pros and cons, and whether we've considered something similar?
So, the way I believe the school is doing it, is they have a program manager in Brailsford and Dunleavy, who is overseeing an additional construction manager. I forget, I think it's like Holscum is their name. But Holscum is the onsite representative who handles all the day-to-day interactions with Gilbane on behalf of the schools, and they report directly to Brailsford and Dunleavy, who reports directly to Peter Noonan and Sevi. Whereas, in the library, since we are a much smaller scale, I will be doing the day-to-day site operation visits, and I will be handling all the submittals, RFIs, change orders, scheduling, on behalf of the city. Because I think that it's well within scope and size for myself to handle it, whereas with the high school, you would need a, a larger staff to take on such a large project.
If we were to do a similar model, how much would it cost us? Do we know?
I mean, an estimate, I mean, we can go off of what Mark on gave us for their pre-construction services, and, I mean, I don't know if I'm allowed to disclose that in open set, or open session or not, but, am I?
Yeah, it's a public contract.
Yeah. I mean, it depends on the, also, the, the tier of project manager that you would get. I mean, you have guys that you probably could come in, wanted to pay them 120, 130,000 dollars. And if you get somebody, like how we have with Centennial, who they, they gave us their regional operations managers, the project lead, that could cost you upwards of 200, 250,000 dollars additional. My salary is nowhere near there.
I, last question. City Hall lessons learned. So, we've talked about this several times, Mr. Shields. Can we do that in an open session, or is that something that we legally have to do enclosed? Because I think that's a big part of this decision-making, is with the last big project we've had, we clearly had some issues, and we want to make sure we're not repeating them, and we need to decide that before we start the project. So, I do think that it merits public discussion, if possible.
Yeah, we agree. We are still in our closeout discussions with HIT Construction. My recommendation is to, for us to give that briefing to the city council in closed session, just during this sensitive period of time. We will have a public discussion about it once everything is resolved. But, we do, you know, there are, the library project does have the application of some of the issues that we encountered with the city hall project, and I think we've addressed them very proactively with respect to the library.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
So, Lionel, I've, I've known you that long, but I got to tell you, man, for the last two years I've been up here, I haven't wrung my hands over a decision more than I have for this one. But, I do feel like concerns we've had over other city projects, about having the right project manager in place, I feel better about having you at the helm than-
Thank you.
-maybe I normally would have. So, I've been very pleased seeing the Board of Trustees meeting and hearing the presentations you've been giving. A couple of questions, I have a bunch of questions, I think, that we'll probably end up going over in closed session. But, as I was reading through this list of responses to the questions, one thing that, really, call it a kind of an existential question related to this project, that the BZA approved a variance on this. Normally, our zoning requirements would dictate 64 parking spaces for a facility like this, which I think may be light, but, but again, it's just based on zoning, not necessarily on a, on a public facility. And we're only going to have 14 after this is all said and done, but we're adding 6,600 square feet, and we're renovating. And 56% of the visitors to this library do not reside in this city. So, are we setting ourselves up by approving this particular renovation and expansion for exacerbating parking issues, creating bigger problems for ourselves than we already maybe have, or at least a perception of having here in the city?
I mean, in my opinion, we are utilizing the space to the best of our ability. I'm hoping that with the development that's going on in Falls Church, that more of these residents will become walkers to the library, and we also utilize a park ave for the overflow of parking. I mean, as far as space, no matter what we did, unless we purchased more land, I mean, the available parking is what it is.
There was a, there was a parking scenario built into this years ago, at least in this conversation. What, what was that initial cost? I know there was an 18.7 million dollar number thrown around for a complete teardown or rebuild, which is not an option.
Yeah.
What was that total cost to be able to address the parking?
There was a number in one of the early budgets, and I don't know that it's particularly reliable, but just for the construction, if I recall correctly, the, the figure was 3.2 million for the construction of a deck on an adjacent property. We don't have any land control for that, so that was not factored into that number, and those negotiations didn't look like they were, didn't look like that was something that the neighboring property wanted to do. So, early on in the project planning, that, that was taken out.
Okay.
At one point during the CIP development process, the cost effectiveness of spot spaces to that was not positive, and so, policy was to remove it from the CIP. There have been on and off conversations about off-site parking arrangements, where maybe, if needed, we could lease parking. In general, if we spike at the library, or farmer's market, or court days. So, those are future options. And I think at the time, when the parking garage came out of the CIP, the thought was it was more cost-effective, that if neighboring parkings, from our TDM study, which showed a lot of the office buildings around City Hall are only 65% utilized at peak times, that maybe we should look at a lease arrangement versus a construction project.
So, I would say there, you know, there are a number of things that I've been upbeat about. There are other things that I've been really down in the dumps about, as we've kind of gone through this process. And one of the issues I raised, I think probably from the very first meeting that I sat in, there's a liaison to the library board, was that we have to solve for the parking problem. And there's usually a number of vacant spaces in the condo building next door that I know has been revisited in the past by our present city attorney and past city attorneys in terms of leasing. But I do think that that, regardless of which direction this goes, if we do decide to proceed, that's something that we're going to need to manage, and we're something we're going to have to deal with. Ms. Oppenheimer raised, Oppenheimer raised an interesting point last time she spoke here in front of council, which I'd considered more, kind of anecdotally, but never really sat down and penciled out the numbers, and that was the economic development benefit of expanding the library and what it means for bringing folks into the city. And I'm someone that is always looking at the financial side of it, the net income side of it, how can we generate additional revenue? And if this project does move forward, if we do in fact have 56% of our visitors coming from outside of the jurisdiction, those are folks that come into the city and presumably spend money, not all of them, some people just want to check out a book. But, if we are looking at getting the most bang for our buck, having folks come into a newly renovated library with better programming, bigger spaces, more spaces, and encouraging them to come to Falls Church, and not, not giving them a place to park, or having them compete for parking with businesses that may in fact tow them, I think is, to some extent, making a decision, shooting ourselves in the foot at the same time. So, I, I'm putting that out there, because it certainly does kind of, it certainly weighs on, on my decision-making around the project that we're looking to approve. But it is something that we're going to need to solve for, and we're going to need to solve for before we actually put shovels into the ground, because again, we will be doing ourselves a great disservice if we don't solve for that, and we're going to exacerbate problems that business owners and others in the community have been yelling about for, for years. So, I'll, I'll reserve the rest of my questions for closed session. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Mr. Snyder?
Sure. Thanks a lot. So, question number 18, and it's answer, that suggests an option which I thought at the beginning of this project would have been the best approach to go, and I still think that there was merit to that. But, the fact of the matter is that we're down the road from that, and so, I personally hope we get going on this project. Thank you.
All right. Any other, Vice Mayor Conley?
I just want to thank all the staff for answering all these questions. There's a lot of questions here, and a lot of work went into these really thorough answers. So, thank you very much. As I read it, it was almost, I felt like I could have taken the George Mason High School reasons why we needed a new high school, and the reasons why we needed a new Mount Daniel, and just slotted it right in there, because they're so similar. When we talk about the HVAC, and the ADA accessibility, and the security, and the utility systems, and everything that is out of date and needs to be updated. So, I thought that was, from line 318 on, the consequences to vote or halt or delay the project was really deja vu to what we've heard before. Ms. Mester, on the parking issue, I thought there was a parking study that we did of this whole area in the last few years. And you looked at what were the spaces that were available to the library, and it was a lot more than 14.
It's more than 14 if you use Park Avenue as indicated. And then, also, we do combine with City Hall campus and the community center. So, we did a, a full parking study of the campus area-
Right.
And then, we also did a secondary study, where we also looked at the commercial building surrounding the area going down to Kaiser, to see what parking is available on the commercial lots that could be better utilized if we had more of a shared parking concept. So, but the BZA waiver and the specific number to the library facility is the 14 spots.
Right. I just, I remember when we talked about all that parking, and I can't remember how many years ago it was.
About three now.
Yeah, right. And your, and the description of what else was available, I think was one of the things that set people's minds at ease, that it would be okay, but we do need to work out some shared parking arrangements.
Yeah, there are peak times where there will be challenges, just as there's peak times with farmer's market and court days. And that's where 313 Park Avenue, which is right next to the library, and 200 Little Falls, which is on the corner right near to City Hall, those are the two commercial properties immediately adjacent, and there's a couple others that have open spaces during our peak operational times.
Okay. And then, I just have one more question relating to questions one and two. So, question one says, the bond referendum was approved for 8.7 million dollars. Confirm that the authorization for 8.7 million dollars in debt, oh, that's not the question. The question is number two. If we've already sold the bonds, are we actually locked into spending the money on the library? And that answer is, it could go to any of the projects in the bond referendum, that 8.7 million dollars?
It can go for any of the projects on the list of the bond referendum resolution that was approved by council last year.
Okay.
And as part of the fall issuance in November, it could go toward the 8.7, well, 8.3, that was for the project 8.4.
Mm-hmm.
That could be used towards any of the projects.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? If not, thank you very much. Thank you for the hard work that's gotten us to where we are today. And I know this conversation will continue on in closed session. Is there any business not on the agenda, any standing regional committee or council liaison reports? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to briefly discuss a question that'll come up on Thursday night before the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission. Council's been briefed on this previously, very quickly, at the end of either a work session or a, a regular meeting back probably at the end of last year. The Commonwealth of Virginia has embarked on a- The Commonwealth of Virginia has embarked on a $3.6 billion project called the Long Bridge Project. And that's part of a very ambitious rail project that extends through much of the Commonwealth of Virginia, which would create an additional bridge for rail traffic across the Potomac River in addition to the existing bridge. The benefit of that will be that passenger trains, Amtrak, VRE, will not have the same tie-ups with the freight rail that they currently do when both freight and passenger rely on the same single track. In addition, the state plans a lot of added rail work in other parts of the Commonwealth of Virginia, as well as to increase VRE service on both the Manassas and the other line coming up from the south. In order to fund this $3.6 billion project, the state has come up with a three-part funding proposal. One part would be the state, one part would be the federal government, and one part would be regional funding. As part of the Virginia portion, the state is requesting that the agreement that was reached between the various jurisdictions and the state for sharing the toll revenue from I-66 inside the Beltway would be altered. That fund currently has about $17 million a year that's allocated in a competitive process to the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission jurisdictions. Recall that the city of Falls Church got its bike share project from that funding source. Nonetheless, no funds are guaranteed. There's a competitive process every year. The state, so the current amount in that, scheduled to go up somewhat over the years, but the current amount in there is $17 million. The state proposes to reduce that $17 million to $10 million, and then add to it $5 million from outside the Beltway toll revenue. So you go from $17 million to $15 million, and then there would be a 2% or so increase in the, in the funding. Meanwhile, you're, so, so under the best of circumstances, you've gone from 17 to 15. You have about a 2% increase per year, where we think the increases would be potentially much larger than that, depending on the tolls and the toll revenue for inside the Beltway. At the last meeting, Loudoun County indicated their view that all the outside the Beltway money, that $5 million that would raise the proposed fund from 10 to 15, really ought to be purely for outside the Beltway jurisdictions. So this will be discussed Thursday night, and the question is council direction on this. When this came up initially in December, I voted against this because I believe that certain promises were made to the city and other NVTC jurisdictions that were suffering from traffic, which has been diverted as a result of these tolls. So the very least, we ought to be in a pretty good position to be able to request funding out of this for various city transportation priorities. There were four of us who voted against. The other jurisdictions around us all supported going into the negotiations. And keep in mind that Fairfax County has VRE stations in service. Arlington has VRE stations in service. Alexandria has VRE stations in service. Loudoun objected to this, but didn't vote against it. So the question will come up, do we agree or disagree as a jurisdiction with the proposal the state has made? Is it, how can I put it? Is it better than it could be? Yes. Is it a lot worse than we have now? Yes. So I throw it open to council for your directions. One other happy thing is it looks like I may have a conflict with this meeting and may not be able to attend it. And that's why it's particularly important that the council give direction. I don't mind communicating in advance what the council says. So I have no problem putting my name on what the council directs tonight. But I will not physically be present on Thursday. So that's the situation. There's some additional changes to the, to the provision. One other thing that I have done is that I have indicated the importance of this funding in the past to Senator Sasselaw so that he has that as background, because ultimately, the legislature will be making the decision here. So that's the whole story. Pleased to take any questions or thoughts about, about the direction.
All right, thanks. Do you have a recommendation?
Well, I voted against it beforehand. My recommendation is to vote against it a second hand, on the second time. There will potentially be a political cost. I don't know how high, or when, or under what circumstances. On the other hand, I feel that a promise was made for a very somewhat interesting, to say the least, proposal on what to do with 66. Our citizens are paying the tolls, just along with everybody else. Keep in mind that in the future, those tolls now will be, after next year, as I understand it, will be applicable to people with two passengers in their cars. A lot of people are using I-66 now without paying the tolls because of the, because of pre-existing law. That's going to change. So I, I took that position. I think it was a case where I needed to represent my jurisdiction, make my points on behalf of the jurisdiction. So that's kind of the situation. But I think the person who's there on Thursday night, and I think the council should feel free to give direction to both me and the person who's going to be there. And if the direction is to go along with the changes, to propose amendments, to vote against it, I'm fine in any direction. But I think it needs to be more of a council decision than just an individual member.
All right, thank you. Are there comments? Mr. Z?
Well, thank you for your longstanding service on the NVTA, Northern Virginia Transportation Authority. I'm disappointed that you won't be there to provide your fine representation, as you always have. But directly to the issue that you talked about, I think that in any sort of negotiations, that if you don't make known and fight for the opportunity to have available some benefit from these things, that any favors you do to adjoining jurisdictions or regions will never be repaid. They'll forget properly as soon as you give them what they want, and that's just the way of life. So I would say let's stick to it and keep on fighting for some of the things that have resulted as downside from, from tolls as high as $43, $67, and inside the Beltway on 66. I would not be even surprised that if some of these 1,082 stop armed scoff laws aren't from the city, they're just busy trying to get to work. And so that's unfortunate consequence of that. And these consequences need to be funded, and they need to come out of the root cause and the, and the provision of resources for, for regional transportation issues. So I would say continue to vote no, and try to strengthen our position. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Mr. Snyder, thank you for your expertise on this. You represent us very well. I have a question about the VRE benefit, and that is, does Falls Church see a benefit from VRE? In that people that are on VRE aren't driving through Falls Church because they're on the train? So is there any consideration of that, that if we are putting people on trains, then we may be reducing the traffic in a different way?
The answer is yes. That clearly there's benefit, VRE. By the way, voting on this agreement isn't voting against the Long Bridge. In fact, I made the point saying, I think the Long Bridge is a very good project. I just think that to raid, I'll use my terms now, it'll be somewhat rhetorical, to raid one of the smallest pots of transportation money out there, one in which we've been successful at getting some money out of in a significant way in order to fund the kind of project that you're talking about here, there's just a total lack of symmetry. Why, why would you do that, except that you could do it? And so that's, that's what caused that. But do we get indirect benefit from VRE? Yeah. Does a region get economic benefit from VRE? Yes. They've even argued that they could put some additional trains on the Manassas line, and that that might reduce the congestion on I-66 sometime down the road. Oh, they've also argued that this change in agreement would allow, because I want to put all this on the table, thanks for asking it. They've also argued that this change in agreement will eventually allow those, some of those funds to be used for an additional Potomac River crossing for Metro, which is much needed in the Roslyn area. Well, when do you think that's going to come, when they're spending $3.6 billion on the Long Bridge?
All right, is there other, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yep. Today, I've, I've been following this issue a little bit. Initially took interest when I subbed in for you at one of the NVTA meetings. I agree with you. I support the idea of the Long Bridge. However, there were promises made to us related to 66. And there were also promises made to us as to how 66 and the tolls would impact cut-through traffic. And I feel that that pot of money that would be raided in order to make this happen through that agreement, I feel that, that those promises should be kept, and they need to find another solution. So I support your position. I support the Long Bridge. But the way that they're going about doing it, I think violates our representation of the interests of our city and those promises that were made to us leading up to the tolling of 66. So thanks for that briefing.
All right. Does anyone else want to make any comments? I think we have heard from at least a majority of folks on council. Mr. Duncan, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, yeah, it seems like the problem is that I'm the person who's going to be attending this meeting.
Yep.
And I, I guess I have some reservations about what I've heard. I mean, you know, to be respectful of all the points that Mr. Snyder made is not hard. I mean, all makes good sense. But, well, my first question is, what was the vote the first time around on the, on the measure?
All voted for it because the discussion was to begin the negotiations. All voted for it except for four.
Except for four, so.
Right.
The majority, four proceeding with.
Yes.
The scenario that you outlined.
Including all of our surrounding jurisdictions.
Seems pretty, so we, if we cast a vote no, we would be, we would be going in knowing that we'd be on the losing side of the vote.
Probably, although I, I don't know whether this is satisfactory to those jurisdictions. But I suspect that it's particular if you're a VRE jurisdiction, you want to state every time you can how great you are, how supportive you are for a jurisdiction that supports VRE. And that would certainly be Fairfax County, Alexandria, Arlington, perhaps other jurisdictions.
So, I mean, that alone, just the fact you're not going to win, isn't, isn't the determinative reason to cast a vote. There are other reasons that you've explained. It's just that in my past, subbing is for you, you know, typically take our cues from our neighboring jurisdictions. It's usually more simple, you know, it's, it's money that's being deployed inside the Beltway versus money that's being spent for massive, you know, vehicle intersections out in Loudoun County. And that's, that's a no-brainer. I mean, if, even if we're not going to win, we cast the vote for the interests of, you know, our vision of proper development and transportation and all that. But this, you know, it seems like some effort has been made to come up with an alternative funding that is, although not completely restorative, at least is some kind of step in the right direction if the promises are fulfilled. I guess my question is, you know, by cooperating essentially with what is a regional priority, do we gain any points in later negotiations or discussions with Sasselaw or the legislature or whatever? Like, hey, you know, I mean, I hear what Mr. Z says, they forget about what you, what you did yesterday and just roll right over you. But, you know, we do have pretty good relationships with people at these transportation agencies, largely because of your work, and, and with Senator Sasselaw and Delegate Simon. I mean, I guess my question is, could we live to fight another day?
This is a vote on an amendment to the agreement, so you don't live to fight another day. This is it. There may be reasons for voting that way. I understand that.
Yeah, not on the vote itself, but just in terms of, you know, later interactions with Sasselaw and Simon and the legislature and some other fight down the road that we want to wage. I mean, or is it just not that high stakes a thing, and we're overstressing, and we just vote against it? And I understand why we're voting against it, because we're getting nothing out of it, and everybody goes their merry way.
Yeah, either, either thing might happen.
Mayor, if I could just add in, I think the no vote at the first meeting was beneficial for the city because that did put NVTC and the executive director, who's been the key negotiator, working on this. So there were changes to the document that'll be before NTC, NVTC, that I think was a direct result of that. That is, there's a guaranteed amount of $15 million, where we didn't have the guarantee before. When it first came out, there wasn't an escalation. So while it's not the $17 million, that was a change. Operating money is now going to be rolling for nine years instead of five. That actually is beneficial for, like, the city if we were to apply for bike share operating money again. And when this first came out, it was only the Long Bridge. And now the agreement does allow for, as Mr. Snyder indicated, the second crossing at Roslyn for the Womata Bridge. It's now permissible, and it can now be debt financed with this funding. So there were changes, I think, as a direct result of the concern raised at the initial meeting.
Well, that's very helpful.
I just wanted to share that it doesn't necessarily change what your positions will be. I just wanted to share the work that I think Kate did. Of course, she is doing it as a, as a regional, she's not advocating just for city of Falls Church. But I think the concerns raised by Mr. Snyder did have some impact in the version that will be before NVTC.
So if we vote no, again, do we find more money in the couch cushions?
Well, I mean, if we vote no after, and kudos to you for wrangling all those concessions out of a no vote, that sounds smart. But the question is now, if those concessions have been made, you know, do we appear to be in bad faith or not in the best of faith if we continue to vote no? Or should we, you know, reward the effort that they've made to reach out towards us by casting a mildly concerned yes vote?
I'm not sure that, Mr. Snyder was one of three, and I know he's a regional voice. But I don't think people would read it that we weren't being responsive to the concessions that were made because the core point that Mr. Snyder did make was, we don't object to the Long Bridge, just find another funding source, not the regional pot of money. So we've been consistent on not getting enough regional money back. So I don't think that specific concern would be there. I just wanted to make sure council was aware of the efforts made. And I think there were changes directly because of Mr. Snyder's advocacy on behalf of the city.
I wonder why this conversation.
Okay, well, thank you for your views. I guess if I'm the one going to the meeting, anybody who wants to talk to me individually, they're welcome to. But certainly, I'd, you know, like us to appear to be constructive players at the regional table and not, you know, acting strictly in what could be perceived as our own self-interest, as noble as that self-interest is.
Well, I'm glad to see that, you know, we will continue to have peace in our time. And I certainly expect to do our best, African, extract a promise from the voters to give us the second crossing under the Potomac for Metro within my ability to care about it. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Is there anything more to be said on that issue?
This is, this is what I'll propose going forward, and additional comments are appreciated from everyone. And so I will, with your review, I will take the heat and send in things and make sure that they're, you know, generally agreeable to you. But I don't have a problem, and I should be the one who expresses the view. You know, and maybe, maybe there's some wordsmithing we can do, and would be, and interested in that as well, so.
So you could be like the bad cop on paper, and I could maybe be the good cop in person, is that what you're suggesting? Very shrewd. Thank you.
All right. Anything? All right. Anything else to be said on that matter? Anything else as far as council comments, committee reports, liaison reports? We do have a closed session later tonight. Are there any approval of minutes? It doesn't look like it. All right. Are we ready to go into, or at least take a motion to go into closed session? So we will be going into closed session probably in the next few seconds. And when we do, those of you in the audience who are not part of this closed session will be asked to leave. We will come out of closed session and make a certification. I think that'll be essentially the end of our meeting. So thank you all for coming out. I'm going to go ahead and read a motion upon a motion made by council member.
Connolly.
Seconded by council member.
Lipton House.
And passed by a vote of city council. Council went into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A29 for discussion of the award of a public contract and the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city, specifically the contract for the library project. Council member Connolly.
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lipton House?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Zee?
Yes.
Tartar?
Yes.
Yep. And the time is?
11:11.
11:11, okay. This is our certification upon a motion made by council member.
Connolly.
Seconded by council member.
Like Lipton House.
And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session, was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed session or meeting by the body. Council member Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lipton House?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Zee?
Yeah.
Tartar?
Yep.
And the time is?
11:11.
11:11, okay. This is our certification upon a motion made by council member.
Connolly.
Seconded by council member.
Like Lipton House.
And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session, was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed session or meeting by the body. Council member Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lipton House?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Zee?
Yes.
Tartar?